Okay, so I call this meeting with North Running School Committee back to order at 5:02 PM. We are in executive session for the purpose of discussing negotiations with unions. And for everybody that's looking at me, I look ridiculous because my glasses are at the bottom of the lake. So I only have prescription sunglasses. I'm not trying to be cool here. So we will begin with public comment. If anybody has anything they would like to address, these, raise your hand or identify yourself in some way. Seeing none, we will move on. I have no, we have no school, no student report.
None tonight.
No continued business. So we go right to new business and I see Mr. Lopret is here. Hello, Mr. Lopret. Hope you're having a good summer and welcome.
Thank you. Nice to see you. I'm sorry to hear about the demise of your classes. That's unfortunate.
I look so stupid on every meeting I do right now, so.
I've been there, I will say. I've been there.
I called my optometrist. They said I'm the third one in the last week to call with this. I'm like, great.
Well, thanks for including me on the agenda.
Okay.
So if you'd like to get started, AJ, I've got the screen being shared. Can everyone see that?
Yeah, super. Thank you. Yes, so I thought it would be, you know, you know, as is kind of our standard practice to talk about any handbook changes, certainly that are policy changes, and there is one. Then, you know, I wanted to include a couple of other edits that certainly don't fall into the policy piece. I don't believe, not if there's other items that have been addressed with some other policy issues. But just to update you though with that and see, you know, what new language might be in the handbook related to those topics. So Patrick, do you want to advance to the next slide?
Yeah, if I could just make a comment too at the top level for the committee. So the, you know, we've worked with council on these changes that are related to changes and updates and regulations. So in some cases, these are, the language in the handbook is often, you know, it's distilled from the policy. This is a place where we've just may now using those same notes and feedback from council that will update our policy so that our policy is updated and then the handbook reflects that. We've just been, these, these changes happen kind of quickly mid-year and we've still been waiting for those updates and that guidance. So this also, I just want to add, you know, the high schools presenting the handbook changes, but we'd be making similar changes to the middle and elementary handbooks as applicable as well. I just wanted to make sure that was clear to everyone.
Thank you. And Dr. Daly, does the school committee have any, I saw the suspension language. Does the school committee have any policies on this or is it just at the handbook level?
No, the school committee would have discipline policies and that's what's in the handbook. And so if we're going to add language or change it, we might need to just tweak the language in our policies as well. So it's, it's all the same process. So we would be doing that very soon. Like I'll be taking the same changes there, but just due to the timing of it, we have to get the updates to the handbook. It's an incredible kind of thing. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So this first slide, the language that is included in the first slide is part of the new law that was kind of decided upon in early fall and then implemented in November. And that is essentially language around ensuring that alternative remedies have been considered prior to any short-term suspension as a standard practice and thus a policy change. That, you know, I think the legislature was really looking to acknowledge some data that had been, you know, evident in some districts or in some, you know, in some places and say, boy, you know, are we doing everything we can to keep kids in school? And I believe that is the genesis of where this language comes from. So naturally, we're, you know, it's, it's part of the new law for 37 H and three quarters. And those are any offenses that would fall outside of drugs, weapons, or assaults. And that's, that's the information that's on the first slide here.
I'm sorry. Jeff, you have a question? Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, does it get more, maybe there's more commentary behind the law? Does it, does it specify what alternative remedies might be?
It does, and we'll, we'll see that in an additional slide, I believe.
And I will be quiet. Sorry about that.
No, it's fine. It's a great question. This is, this is the language that the legal team had offered for that kind of section. And then we'll see it a little bit later on.
Fair enough. Sorry about that.
And Mr. Lopret, the only question that I had, and I'm sure the answer is, that's what, we only did what the law said. But in function of suicide, bodily injury, or other serious harm upon another person. So if a student is suicidal, that doesn't rise to the level to, again, I mean, I guess you're not suspending somebody for being suicidal. But that was just my only concern is that if there was a, if there was a need to remove somebody because they were potentially harming themselves, if anybody else could possibly get harmed by that, is that a reason?
So this does not, this does not necess, this does not impact the emergency removal language. That language is still intact. And I believe that's where you're, that's where the answer to your question lies.
Okay, yeah, it's not a suspension, it's a removal.
This is more, this is more about as a, using suspension as a consequence and making sure that it's maybe only implemented, you know, as a, as a, I don't want to say as a last resort, but certainly not prior to any other alternative remedies being considered.
Just, just to reiterate that when this law changed a few years ago, what it basically said was that schools should consider some alternatives before going right to discipline. We should consider some of what you're going to speak about. The updates in November now says we have to document that we did consider them. And this is why we either did them or didn't do them. That's the real change and that's what the language is updating. So the more substantive change was a few years ago.
And here we are with your question, Jeff, as it is identified here. So it's very similar language. So this, this portion is more in our kind of practices and procedures rather than policy specifically, but it certainly, as Dr. Daly said, already comes from the policy. So maybe kind of starting halfway, three quarters of the way down there, talks about alternative remedies may include that, but shall not be limited to mediation, conflict resolution, restorative justice, and collaborative problem solving. So again, that's, that's where it's saying you can, you know, you should be starting at least in those areas as to consider alternatives.
And I'll mention also that we've been following this already since November 1, it went into place. We had, you know, as needed, we did updates, but this is really just to update the handbook to what we've been doing in practice since the changes came out last fall.
Right. It, it became effective in November of '22.
And we have, you know, we've updated our letters, how we communicate with families. All of that has been in place since it came on the books and now it's just a matter of updating the handbook.
And can I, can I just ask as a, as a side question or a little bit of a side question? You know, I remember last year that, just a few months ago, the middle school presented about some of the alternative remedies that they've been working on. I'm curious what work has been done along those lines at the high school level? I don't think we've.
No, no, we.
Talked, you know, we presented to us, so.
Sure. We, we have looked at, you know, conflict resolution and we've, we've employed mediation strategies, you know, for, you know, kind of consistently even prior to this. We have, you know, some restorative justice practices that are in place. You know, the collaborative problem solving. So there, there is definitely steps in, in those areas. You know, there's, there's a lot to consider when kind of, you know, opening up a disciplinary issue to other parties.
Yep.
And how we might do that in an effective way. So I think when, you know, we, we talk about conflict resolution, we're talking about restorative justice and collaborative problem solving. We're trying to, I think, again, we have those alternatives, we have those options. We, we, you know, we kind of employ those as, as appropriate.
And we, we specifically have been talking about the, the person who presented from middle school is a trainer and they are able to work with us. And we are trying to make some arrangements to see whether that would work well to have that person work with some of our additional middle school staff and maybe some high school staff. So that's where we're, we are in that place to see, you know, we can, because we can always improve our, our programs and our training and our capacity. Because as was presented there, it's not just, it's a cultural change. It's not just something that Barry Ann and AJ are doing. It's something every teacher's doing when they, when they're dealing with conflict in their classroom before it even rises to the level of a suspendable offense. So everything that was presented there is under consideration as well as we, as we try to make this, you know, for the spirit of why these things are in the law and why the changes are there is because we're trying to address, you know, disproportionate numbers across the state in the way things are resolved. And so we want to try and use these remedies as they're proven more effective. Yep.
It is, it is significant to note that in the middle of that language, as Dr. Daly had said, that the law is now shall consider. You know, it does say unless specific reasons are documented as to why such alternative remedies are unsuitable or counterproductive.
Yep.
So again, it's, in, in speaking with other schools and with the legal, you know, our legal team, you know, it, some of the trainings, it was clear, you know, you have that opportunity that if, if a response from a student is, you know, I, I would not be changing my behavior if being put back into that same situation. You know, or I'm unwilling to participate in X, Y, or Z. You know, there's that language in there that says, you know, we want, you must consider it, but it may not always be effective or productive.
Yep.
Thank you, Patrick. If you'd go to the next slide?
Yep.
So you, you may recall that, I'm going to say back in 2020, we had talked about the senior exam exemption. We've had two years of data now to look at this proposed model. And again, because of the, the language that existed prior and how it impacted other things that was in, that was in school policy and how this change, you know, kind of impacted that. We have some information with respect to this. It's my, you know, it's my belief that this is something that I would like to employ formally beyond a two-year pilot. And what we have here on this slideshow is the specific language around the standards of exemption. If you want to scroll through here, Patrick, you may, you may recall some of this from the, from our previous discussions, a 93 average as the criteria, having accrued no more than three unexcused absences from the class and having met the expectations for school conduct. Next slide, please. And then this is other information around kind of how we would implement and communicate the data out and, you know, implement the system during these two pilot years and some other kind of basic conditions around it. If you want to scroll through that. And certainly if you want to, you know, fire away with questions as, as I kind of summarize this briefly, that's fine. I would like to get to the, to the data because I think it's, it's important to share. And you may recall from last year, once you see it, that, you know, we, that we had some interesting data after kind of year one and we have kind of equally interesting data after year two. Next slide, please. So again, this is just information that, that kind of completes the, the definition of what's happening and how it impacts a student's day if they have an exam or they're exempt from another exam. Next slide, please. So we have our kind of year two data juxtaposed to our year one data. And you can see we had a larger senior class and thus more exams. Again, for the most part, every student is taking eight exams. But the things that I think stand out are the, is it kind of the exemption percentage? Where nearly, almost half of the exams, a student was exempt. I'd like to think that that, the incentive piece was a large piece of that. We had a small increase, but again, still, you know, again, an increase, but also fairly consistent with the, the fact that, you know, over 90% of the, of the students in the senior class had at least one exam exemption that they qualified for. You can look at the drop in the attendance disqualifications per se. And, and I'd like to think that that's also a, a factor in the incentive piece. And equally in the discipline category, the percentage of students that were disqualified due to, due to not meeting the discipline criteria. Any questions about the data?
Looks very good to me.
So we, we had an opportunity to get some student feedback and I didn't want to, you know, I didn't think it was right or fair to roll out the survey prior to the exams. And so of course we waited until that was over. So we didn't have a ton of seniors, as much as I kind of implore them to complete surveys and things. We only had 36 responses, but you, we have the, the data here with those, the questions that were asked. And that kind of one, I don't really agree to four, I very much agree. And then the average response score is on, included on these survey questions. So, you know, kind of it kept me engaged in quarter four. And again, that was one piece of this. So you can see kind of certainly in the agree category. Next question there, Patrick, thank you. Is fair and makes sense? Again, you can see the percentage and the average score. Was positive for my mental health. Again, that was when the, when the original senior class presented this. They brought that up and I don't, I don't think it was a, I don't think it's a misplaced piece of this proposal. And we'll see some other data, data later on about that. Clear and the information was clear and, and communicated. I support the exam exemption as is currently written. I will say that there was a number of student responses that were asking that the, the number be lowered from 93 to something lower. I still feel very strongly that the, 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 the pieces that kind of make up the, the why of this include all of those, you know, the number of topics we just talked about, like mental health and kind of rewarding somebody for hard work. But I don't think any of that information trumps the fact that you've mastered the material. And I think if we are going to offer a student the opportunity not to take the exam, it's because you've demonstrated that you've mastered the material. While those other things are beneficial, that, that, I don't, I think going lower than a 93 kind of makes me a little more concerned about what are, what are we putting the emphasis on? And I don't think knowing the material would be, would kind of remain that highest category. These are, this is some information around the response, the respondents and what their number of exams were that they were exempt from.
Mr. Lopret, do we have any idea if, if the threshold was 90% instead of 93, how many more students would have, how many more exams would have been exempt?
Yeah, yeah, we definitely, definitely, I have that data for you today, right now, no, but I have it.
To be curious. I mean, again, I'm not suggesting we make a change to it, but if.
No, I'm happy to, I'm happy to, I'm happy to follow up with that. Absolutely. I mean, you know, I could, I could go fishing around for it right now and I, but I'm happy to, I can report on that at a later time for sure.
Yeah, I mean, because if, if we were to ever say we wanted to extend it for mental health reasons, you know, just to kind of lower the number. I don't think anybody would probably, I wouldn't support like lower than 90%, but I think that's the one. You know, I think you could make the argument that if you're, you know, at like an A minus and you wanted to not take it, you're, you know, you're close to mastering it.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Okay.
So now we have, you know, ultimately the kind of the last question should be permanently adopted by the school committee. And again, this, this is, this, this, as it was related back to the policy language that existed before, which is why that we kind of stayed consistent with that piece. Faculty survey data, again, on the same kind of Likert scale and a very similar version of the question. Kept students engaged and you can see it's, you know, kind of up to 70% there with a 2.7 average response. If you want to advance, Patrick, thank you. Is fair and you can see again, that, that response data, 42 response respondents from the teachers. Positive for student mental health. Clear and well communicated. Again, you know, I think there's, there's a strong understanding that it, that it, the information was clear and well communicated. Support as is currently written. I think teachers are, you know, it's a little bit mixed bag on, on some of this information. Some people really like it. Some people would like to see it, you know, lower. Some people disagree with it altogether. So that's why you kind of have a little bit of a mixed bag here. But then when we go to this question, you can see that it's, it certainly seems to be something that teachers are in line with. So again, my, my hope is that we're moving forward, given the, the two years of the study, the student feedback, the faculty feedback and certainly myself and, and the assistant principal, Mrs. Alonso, are, are on board and looking to make this a, a permanent piece of our senior kind of academic program.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Lopret. I have one comment and then two administrative questions. But comment is just, I think this is an excellent presentation. I appreciate, I know when we, this, we had specifically asked for some data on this and some feedback and this is exactly what I would have envisioned. So I really appreciate that. The two administrative questions for Dr. Daly. Number one, should we adopt this policy separate from the other handbooks or should we do it all as one? And then the second thing is when I was going through it just for permissions on the Google document, I couldn't, I clicked on the student slide presentation earlier and it didn't give me access to that one. So just as we're going to be doing more on Google Docs, I think if there's, you know, I could get to the, the thing you were sharing, but I couldn't get to the slide presentation within that document, so.
So yeah, I can, I can work with that. And, you know, that's part of when we, when we share out. I will drop those in. I don't think I dropped that such thing in the, in the drop.
And should it be a separate adoption policy for this policy alone or should we just do the handbook altogether?
I think it, I mean, this is going in the handbook as a change, Mr. Lopret, correct? So I think it could all fall under handbook changes.
It could all fall, fall under handbook changes. Yeah, I would agree. And I, and I think, you know, respectfully, Scott, that I don't know if this be, I think it was in the policy package because of the other language prior to around how honor essayists and all that stuff. But I think as that's now separate, I think this falls into more of the kind of the change that's a procedural change and a practice change, but not necessarily a policy change.
Okay. And we can do it all together. And if for any reason anybody disagrees with certain of these policies, we could vote them individually, but I think we'll probably have enough support for the package, so.
Yeah, I'm okay with it together.
Okay.
Thank you. Dr. Daly, should we go back to the other slide presentation?
Just, yeah, the weighted.
Bring up those other bullets.
Average.
There's a couple of additional.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, just in case there's any pushback on any of the changes, we could go to a separate one, but we'll start together.
Yeah, thank you. So the item that you have now is, you know, speaks to that, the topic around the graded, grading and the weighted GPA and class rank. And that, again, the, the work that we did around looking at how the class essayists were selected as a part of our graduation ceremony. And you may recall that we've had a number of students, you know, kind of speak personally to this issue about, you know, the, the, the pressure that they may have, you know, either placed upon themselves or felt or that they didn't feel was healthy. And, and then the idea of trying to open up and, and, you know, accessibility to being a part of graduation to a larger student group. This language then speaks to how that would be accomplished. And I'll kind of let you read that. So we have historically used our panel of teacher readers for our class essayist. And this year we implemented a more of a formal application process to that for teachers. We implemented a rubric scoring system that was more robust than we've used in the past. So with the intent of kind of being a little more practiced in this for the next two years that, so that starting in the class of 2027, this new practice would be in place to identify our honor essayists at graduation, but not until 2027.
Any questions on this? Nope. Okay.
Okay, thank you. We would be adding this portion to the, the existing language around academic honesty. This is something that I, you know, we present, you know, kind of given the times and the, the no longer creeping in component of AI. So this would kind of be woven into our academic honesty, I should say, language, not policy language. But I do want to share with you, given the, you know, the timeliness of it.
I never even thought about this until Dr. Daly's speech at graduation. I didn't even know that was an option.
All right. And so I think, I apologize. I think that was the last, that was the last one. If we go back to the table of contents, that first page, Patrick, if you don't mind, just to make sure we get everything. Yep, there it is.
Any questions or comments overall?
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate you including me, again, including me on the agenda and in your patience as we go through these topics.
Of course. Thank you. Okay. So if there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept the student parent handbook edits for 2023, 2024.
I move to approve the student parent handbook edits for 2023, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion from Diana, a second by Noel. So since we're virtual, we'll have to roll call vote. Diana?
Hi.
Noel?
Hi.
Jeff?
Hi.
Rich?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. It's unanimous, 5-0. Thank you very much, Mr. Lopret.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you, everybody.
Nice to see you.
Good seeing you. Have a great summer.
You too. You too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lopret.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move on to the school committee goals. And Dr. Daly, I don't know if you want to walk us through this, if you want. Are we just going to do up, you want to just go through and sort of grade ourselves? Like how, how should we do this?
Sure. So what I think, you know, we're really just going to have a little bit of a discussion about this process. I think the, the, the assessment would be in, in August. But we just wanted on there tonight to see what are we talking about? We're, the proposal for the August meeting is to have a goals workshop for next year. So we thought we'd have some, a little bit of a discussion tonight. And then Jeff or Noel, I don't know if you want to share out what we'll do, but we'll do something similar where everyone can give feedback through, in a shared drive, similar to last time?
Yeah, so I mean, I've sort of gone back and forth on this because either way, you're sort of eliciting, listening feedback. Last time I did it actually was more of just sending, sending an email around and, and just incorporating feedback from that. So before I just say, hey, why don't, here's what we're going to do. Is there a preference on how to give feedback from this group? Because I'm sort of fine either way. You know, incorporating feedback from individuals or, or having a shared document's pretty easy for me. So I guess my question is, what do you guys prefer to do? Either way, the document will end up in a shared folder, but in terms of. Either way, the document will end up in a shared folder. But in terms of giving feedback, what what's what's the preference of this team?
I like the shared document.
And I was gonna say, personally, I think sometimes it's easier just to say, here's my thoughts. But there's there. Remember, this, there's two different things that we did, right? There's basically whether we met this this document or this. We met these goals or not. And then there's the Rubik's that we did. Correct? So I think the Rubik's. Yeah. Yeah, I think the Rubik's is probably one that like we can each give our comments on, whether you want them individually or on one document is probably fine. And it's good to, I guess, in a way, we see where Rialto is saying, which, I don't know, maybe takes away slightly, because like if I know Noel and Diana and Rich all said. Three on this or four on this, whatever, and then I go different. Doesn't matter. But I think on the leaders, on whether we met these goals, I think it's more, it should probably be more to the people that have the goals, because. I don't even know if some of these are met or not, because I wasn't necessarily part of those. So I would probably lean towards the people that were assigned the goals on whether they were accomplished or not personally.
I think that's fine.
If we if we wanted to take a few minutes here just to review and go through them and just share. Either share an update now or or that you will be sending out an update or something to share. We could do that.
Yeah, let's just run through them. So leadership and governance. Committee will engage in one professional development presentation or session related to school committee responsibilities and the authority under NGL. Rich and Noel, do we think we've accomplished that? Are we going to accomplish that? Are we? Not accomplishing that.
So I think we have to say that we have not made any progress moving forward on this goal, so it will not be accomplished this year. It's a good goal to keep keep working on, but it's not going to happen this year.
Well, it's good to know what we have and have for next week, because then we can. For the next meeting, because then we can just say, okay, if we want to keep this on or not.
Yep.
Okay, and Diana and Jeff, who can we review the school committee policies related to school safety plan and the role of the school resource officer?
I've read it, but I will say, you know, I I have met with Diana about it, but I I've read this material, but I haven't gone much further than that.
Yeah, and I think the the work related to the school resource officer, there was some advocacy and exploratory conversations, obviously tied to the town. And not so much in our control, but the changes that were made. With more presence in learning the school grounds, I think was a. A good checkmark in the right direction, but that didn't necessarily happen because of the school committee. That was something that.
Right.
A group of people brought together that obviously we support. So. I think we're in a good place right now, but, you know, there's obviously room for more advocacy.
Yeah, and and I I would say that, I mean, I was in some of those meetings as well, so I wasn't really, you know, on the school resource officer. I think that's sort of. You know, I think a couple of committees have to come together to make changes there, and that didn't happen. But I think we've had some discussions. We even had executive discussions about school safety. I I would feel comfortable saying we've accomplished this because we've had some discussions. And I think that's the key thing with all these, that we at least have the discussions on these. And I don't think there's anything that any of us are advocating to happen right now that isn't happening, because. You know, we haven't. Advocated for it or tried to do it. So I I personally think this has probably been met, but.
Yeah, I I would just agree that the work that that Diana and Jeff did on this led to some of the changes that we implemented. I mean, a lot of this work was done. This time last year, leading into having the increased presence in the schools and and quite honestly, even some of the work that we did. As we look to hire a new police chief, a lot of the conversations that I brought, because I was on that committee, reflected what was brought from the school committee. And some of those ideas, including the way we use our school. Resource officer and what a safety plan could look like. And even the work we did around the service dog, I think every single candidate. For chief mentioned about service dogs, too. So I mean, that work as well can be related to. Um, school safety and school resource officers from a mental health as well, you know, that that. Aspect of safety as well. So I think there's a lot of positives to share from this work.
Okay, moving on to the financial asset management. First ones about kindergarten and full day, full day kindergarten and universal pre-day, pre-K. We did have some conversations about that. And we did, when we were talking about the cuts, I think as a committee, we all agreed that we wanted to continue to lower the. The cost of full day kindergarten. So while I don't think that we're all the way there yet, I think we accomplished what we wanted to this year. And. You know, that was something I think we were all in agreement that it's been a priority of the districts, and we should continue on that. And we disagree with that being met. And then the next one's for Jeff about solar power, power. I know we talked about it. I think that I think the consensus was that nothing has really, nothing has changed enough, but.
Yeah, there's no substantial change. I did a bit, a bunch of research on it. There's really no substantial change in terms of incentives.
Yeah, but but there might be something coming and so we.
Yeah, I I don't think it's bad to keep it on the radar.
Yeah. Yeah, but I'd say we did what we could do and.
Yeah, if I if I could just jump in on that really quickly, I think there is potential changes coming down the road, as Jeff said. So certainly. Important to keep it on the radar. RMLG can. Do some more requests for information and put some bids out there. So it's certainly, there are some incentives that could be changing in the market. So important to keep it on there.
And then the next one's about Esther funding. And again, I think I think the point of this goal was to really. Be thinking about this when we're doing the budgeting. And we did. I mean, we didn't add a particular position because we were worried about losing another one. We've already talked about. Trying to maintain at least that position from the Esther funds for next year. So I would argue that we've done what we wanted to do, was we sort of have a strategy, and. It seems like the positions that we want to keep from the Esther funding funded ones, we sort of already incorporated them into the. Early projections for next year. And that's it. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's fair. And I think Dr. Daly has talked about. Sort of a a strategy to to to. Get the get the positions in place that we need for next year. So I think. We're all certainly well aware of of this and other challenges. In terms of budget, so.
Yeah.
I was going to share as a part of my administrative report, but I I'll add here, because as a part of this strategy, one of your. Challenges to us was to see if, you know, we could figure out a way to structure this to hire a STEM coordinator. We have. Moved somewhat forward and and appointed one of our high school staff members. Michelle Caulfield is going to be our STEM coordinator for the district. So we're really excited about. About that. We'll have sort of a larger release of that pretty soon to the community. But we're very excited about about Michelle. Being able to move forward in that role. So that's great news.
What what was Michelle's role in the past?
She was a she's done many things. She she actually taught North Reading many years ago, then left, went to a different district, did some other things, came back to our district. Maybe about between eight and ten years ago, I'd say, as a science teacher, sorry, as a math teacher at the high school. She presented. If you recall, she presented her graduate research to us last spring. That she had done for her for her graduate research. So she she's now administrator in the district.
That's great.
The next one's on the fee structure and Rich and and I and Dr. Daly and. Michael Connolly met again today. At the next meeting, we're going to be proposing for the school committee to vote on a universal cap. So we, I think we've done what we were supposed to do there. That doesn't mean there's not more fees discussions to happen. And I think that's. That that came up in those meetings. So I think for next year's goals, there'll be more stuff on fees about whether, you know, whether we have the right ones, whether some should be lowered, whether they should be indexed to get to a certain percentage. I also think bus fees are a big thing. We talked about when we agreed with a higher bus fee, we should look at. How to do busing and like whether there's anything to be done. So I think we can put that on the agenda for next time. But in terms of this specific one. I think one thing what we wanted to look at was, you know, possibly having universal cap, and we will be proposing that for the school committee at the next meeting. Rich, anything to add there?
No, you know, I. We may, I may bring up at the next meeting a discussion about. The. Fees for the the activity fees for the extracurricular fees or. Am I? Am I naming that correctly? But I I think in general, you've said what what we've discussed, and that's appropriate.
Yeah, and it could, we've talked a lot about fees overall. And so there's another, there's another piece to this that we could also maybe even look at. And. I think the question is the timing of that. And I I hear you on that one, whether we should try to do something immediately or. Or not. When we get to educational programs. The, let's see, school committee will adopt what participating working group to implement steps of NRPS twenty twenty-five, including the equity, diversity, inclusion and belonging. I think that's probably happened. I know at least, I know you guys have gone to a lot of those various meetings as well. I would say that that's been met. Do you guys agree with that?
Yep. Certainly felt supported. And from their presence and their, the overall support you've given us with this important work, so.
Well, encouraged to just provide exploration of UDL and expansion of expansion of MTSS. I think Noel and Diana, did we probably?
Yeah. And and forgive me, if I break up, let me know. I have a bad connection. So if you don't hear me, just like give me a thumbs down. Um, I have, I I feel like with each of the school presentations, they've definitely. Touched on this, the MTSS and the UDL, and I'd like to continue to see how they're incorporating it in the in the school presentations. I think that's definitely a goal that. We've been, you know, we've been doing well at, but I think we should keep it, keep it on there, because I think it's. Going to be interesting to see how that continues to work in the schools.
Agreed.
Absolutely. Yeah, and 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 maybe in the future, I mean, even just to even connect with some of the principals beforehand and just, you know, specifically on that topic.
Yeah.
And then family community relations, school committee will review the policies and procedures to continue to provide opportunities for hybrid public meetings. And to explore, you know, whether to continue this. I think we've done that. I mean, I think the owl has been a really big improvement personally. I think it's solved a lot of it. I still think. Maybe having a larger screen at some point where we can see things. But. Yeah, and I I think the idea is that we'll continue hybrid, at least for now.
Yeah, and wasn't there a continuation at some point of the? Of the rule, at least till like twenty twenty-four?
Maybe twenty twenty-five, I believe.
I think that's right. I think I think we can, and I think we can. Go looking ahead, we can sort of table this until then. Yeah, in terms of in terms of us coming up with ways to mitigate any kind of reversion to the previous policy. Uh, I I think we can, you know, if it's not going to be till twenty twenty-five, at least we can probably set that aside for a bit.
Yeah, it goes until March thirty-first. So we could continue. As we have with, I agree that we started experimenting a little bit with some screens and some things and, you know, so we can keep doing that.
I mean, the only question would be, the law allows us to meet hybrid. It doesn't doesn't require us to meet hybrid. And so I guess the only question is whether we all agree that this is the best way to do it. And unless somebody disagrees, I think it's been good to to allow a few people that wanted to come virtually to be able to attend. And. Sadly, not a lot of parents or, you know, community members have taken advantage of that, but it is available if they want. And. So again, I don't think it has to be necessarily a goal next year. We could talk about that at the workshop as well. But I think. The question is, like, do we want to do it? Because we we've asked before, like, whether it's not even worth it, because people aren't going, and it's a little bit of, you know, confusion sometimes. But we can talk next week or next meeting about whether. We've met that. But I think we've sort of been saying we want to just continue with it. And the last one's working with CPAC, and I've attended. The meetings that have happened. I've attended some of the presentations that have happened. And there's been a couple of planning sessions as well that I was, I I met with the the leader of the group. And. So I think I think we've accomplished that.
And I would say getting some of the curriculum materials that with the Understanding Our Differences program, I think is sort of a. You know, it it definitely is a result of some of this work that school committee's done, along with the CPAC, along with. Uh, Ms. Conan and Mr. Clean to get those programs in place and the and the principals, obviously.
And so any other comments on our goals? Hearing none, we'll move on to the superintendent's goals. Dr. Daly, you want to lead lead us through this or?
Sure. So I'm just going to go over my just similar process. I'll give a quick update, but I will share out some more. Evidence, just a reminder that, so it's a little different now. I am on a two-year plan. So this isn't the summit of evaluation. That you've done in the past. This is a formative evaluation that we're doing. So we used to do it twice a year. Now we're doing it once a year. And but this is the formative year, and then the year after is the summit of year. So our goal is this year was really to look at the data that we need for school improvement. And so I've done that at each of the five schools. And there's a. A lot of work in aligning our school improvement plans. So what I've been doing now is meeting with all of our principals this spring. To review some of the data that is available. I think everyone has expressed how much they appreciate. The the change that we've made to have these school improvement plans now in the early fall. So that we'll have all of that end of year data, the MCAS data will be in, the iReady, all of that information. And it really will set that tone of, you know, an improvement plan for that school year with a little bit of a catch up on, you know, whether we met our goals. And how that impacts us moving forward. And it really has helped us to inform our retreat in the summer to look at the alignment with our NRPS twenty-five goals. And how they've been carried out through our. School improvement plans and even our individual administrator and educator goals. So we are preparing now. Our second goal is about. Working on the. Exploration of the administrator evaluation rubric. So we took a deep dive into that this year, spent a lot of time at our faculty meetings, looking at those. Updated tools for evaluation, and we're going to be using those moving forward. And using those culturally responsive teaching guides. With our staff, we really did an exploration of it. But what we've come to agree, what we're going to work on at our retreat this summer, is. Unpacking those guides and coming up with a plan of how we're going to use them when we go into classrooms next year. So, you know, trying to have us to realize. You know, as administrators, when we walk in a classroom, are we seeing what we want to see? And are the teachers' lessons culturally responsive? Is the classroom environment culturally responsive? And is there anything that we're missing that might be impacting? Students who've historically been marginalized. And so working with, you know, Sean, Colleen has done a tremendous job working with. Uh, Ms. Barrows to come in and develop some training for our our staff. On how to evaluate and what we're looking for. So it's really about establishing a culture of making it comfortable for teachers to come in. Uh, for administrators to come into a teacher's room and have this conversation and give feedback. But along with training our staff on how to do this. It's also about training our teachers about what they should be doing, what they could be doing differently. And so the two things really go hand in hand. So as we go into next year. We now have sort of a framework for this. Culturally responsive work, but also for the teachers to understand they're going to be learning something, they're going to try it out, we're going to be coming in to visit their rooms. And we'll give them feedback on what we're seeing. So that's really the tool, and that's going to be a large focus of our street, our our retreat this summer. And also some of the professional development through next year. What I would plan to do between now and our next meeting is give you sort of an update on NRPS twenty twenty-five from what we've done. If you were to go to the website now, we've sort of updated and we're rolling forward. So everything's been updated to reflect our goals for next year. But we're going to record in a different color. Some of the changes. So there are things that we said we're going to do for next year, but because of where we got to this year, there are some things that we need to add, change, course correct. So. That work right now, we're in the stage of the administrators are all giving us feedback on whether we've. You know, met these goals, similar to what we're talking about now, whether we've hit them, whether we've started them, made some progress, significant progress. We're going to take those comments and that feedback to update and and improve our goals and make sure we're fully on course for next year. So. That retreat is scheduled for the first week of August, second, third. And so following those days, I'll be able to share out the full. Sort of report of where we are to you. So you'll have all of that to look at. As you can give some feedback to me on on what I need to do differently in the second year of my goals. The third goal, very similar to what we just spoke about, we have our multi-tiered system of supports. We've done a lot of work to really break this down at the administrative level this year, having a lot of reports. We've done a lot of work to really break this down at the administrative level this year, having a lot of reports and, um, sharing at the different schools about what this looks like. We've spent a lot of time talking about, um, you know, best practices at each building. And again, this is another focus of our retreat this summer is what we need to do in this next year. And I think the high school, um, is, is where it's the newest, this concept of an intervention block. We're going to start an exploration next year at the high school of, you know, the power block period that exists. And could that be a possible in-road to some intervention blocks? But we've really done a lot at the middle school. Uh, we've increased the number of days that we're doing MTSS and what that looks like during that, those periods. We've changed the schedule, part of why we have the, the different, you know, we have two lunch periods at the middle school now. And so we've worked on that at the elementary schools. You know, the focus this year across the five schools was really improving our tier one instruction and talking about what that looks like for all students. What we're going to start to look at it next year is what do those tier two interventions look like for students that need, need some support? So there's a lot of great work that lies ahead in, uh, 23, 24. And I don't know if anyone has any questions, but the plan again is for me to provide you an update in terms of, um, I'll, I'll send that out as a part of, I'll, I'll probably, I'll try to send it out ahead of the packet, um, with some updates on, on NRPS 2025, which will encapsulate the work of these goals. There will be a form that I'll fill out that I will share out ahead of time too. So, so, you know, ahead of the packet, just so that everyone has, um, you know, time to, to give some feedback. So similarly, Jeff and Noel, you can figure out the best way to collect that information, but I will pre-fill it all and then you can collect the information. So at the August meeting, you'd be giving me some, some feedback in the, in the, in that session.
Uh, my only question, Dr. Daley is a silly one, but at our PS 2025, it took a while. You, you, you did a very different process in creating this than before.
Yeah.
Then at the administrative, then it went out to the public. So I guess my question is, this next school year is 2023, 2024. When do you begin work on the, you know, the, the next model? Is that in 2024? So is it, we finish up these goals and then the next one will start looking at that? Or do you wait till 2025 to begin that process?
Yep, sure. So our goals are set through the 24, 25 school year. So in the 24, 25 school year, as we start to, um, talk about, you know, I'm thinking so next summer is when we'll start talking about, you know, are there going to be any major shifts for the next five-year plan? Are we going to look at, um, anything new that might come into, into the fold? So.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on Dr. Daley's? Okay, looks like you're on track. Thank you. And then, let's see, what's next? Minutes. It's about well, do you want to lead us in the minutes approvals?
I sure can. I move to approve the minutes for the executive session of the school committee dated June 12th, 2023 as written.
So many to second.
Second.
Diana and Noel will say.
There you go.
So we'll have to do roll call vote. So Diana.
Aye.
Noel.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Passes by zero. Thank you.
The move to approve the open session minutes of the school committee dated June 12th, 2023 as written.
Second.
By Diana, second by Noel. Diana.
Aye.
Noel.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Passes by zero.
I move to approve the town meeting minutes of the school committee dated June 12th, 2023 as written.
Second.
Motion by Diana. Noel, Diana.
Aye.
Noel.
Aye.
Rich.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Last one.
And I move to approve the executive session of the school committee dated July 6th, 2023 as written.
Second.
Motion by Diana.
Abstained.
I know. Well, and I was going to say Diana, you weren't at that one. So, so Diana abstained.
Yeah. Sorry. I thought you were calling me.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Passes four to zero with one abstention. That's it. Thank you very much. And we move over to Mr. Connolly to lead us through a number of things that he's sent along.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Buckley. So first, uh, for a budget update was the final fiscal year 2023 budget report. This does include, um, the final numbers, um, for the closeout of fiscal year 2023. Um, happy to report through some really hard work by the business office and my team. We had a successful, smooth closeout of fiscal year 2023. As, as projected, most personnel costs remain within budgeted ranges. As you can see by the attached report, um, we were able to utilize some savings that we, we had in a variety of areas, including professional development costs, utility costs, some areas of supplies and materials and some salary accounts for due to attrition and some savings and teachers, paraprofessionals, um, and special education to assist the district in meeting our prepaid special education, um, budgeted amounts. And we were able to, to do that with year-end funds. We also were able to do some curriculum materials, all of which is going to help us prepare for next school year. And we did exceed the $150,000 budgeted prepay amount. Uh, we, a little bit more than doubled that amount. So that will provide some additional flexibility as we enter fiscal year 24. I think the revolving accounts are certainly in, in good status where we, we met our carryover targets that were all anticipated and budgeted and forecasted during the budget development process. So I think all in all, despite some, some challenges and some unanticipated costs, which always happen, we were able to manage the fiscal year 2024 budget, um, closeout well and we're in good, good standing for fiscal year 2024. Any questions on the budget report? We did close out with a very small balance of $210, which will close out to the town general fund. Um, I will say this is our lowest amount that we have ever had in terms of carryover, committed in open encumbrances for invoices that were not received by June 30th. $6,412.99 were just invoices that we were not able to pay by June 30th that have carried over. And I think we've already paid those or are paying those on this week's warrant. So that, that's a lot of hard work by my office in particular, Sabita Pye in my office that really work hard to get all the invoices in. So I, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. I think you do an excellent job and so does your team. So thank you very much. My only question on it was, um, for the special education, I just want to make sure, I know some years if they go up a lot, then we can get extraordinary, extraordinary relief. I assume that we are not in that situation from this year.
Correct. Yeah, we were, we were slightly under that threshold. It's 25% greater than the prior year. We were like, we had some additional, um, audit district costs, but we were, when we did the math on that, we were, we were more in like the 15 to 18% range. So just, just under that threshold.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I just had a quick question on the, uh, uh, on the extra amount of prepays we were able to do, special education prepays. That money that gets freed up is, is, is general money, right? It's not encumbered for a special education in any way.
That's correct. Yes, correct.
Great. Okay. You want to lead us through the end of your financial report?
So we had a couple of audit findings. So I, I think I've been updating the committee that we had some audits being done. One was the typical, which is a little bit later than years past, because the town did switch auditors. That auditing company did get bought out in mid, in midst of, um, the audit switch. So I think their closeout of fiscal year 22 now was a little bit delayed. So then that kind of delayed our end of the year financial report audit. But I'm happy to report, we did meet the June 30th deadline, um, with the DESI. So we, we still were able to get everything completed. And that audit report is, was reflected, uh, included in the Dropbox. It's a little bit of a different format than the prior auditor, but happy to report there was essentially no, no findings. There was one finding, um, that I had to do with amendment four, which was done. And they had to do with more of a spreadsheet issue with some numbers I got on the town, town end of the books with long-term debt, principal and interest. That was included. I think some numbers were just included twice in the spreadsheet that was sent. But those were, um, picked up and then amended already. So that was, that was it. And everything else was in good standing with that report.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly. That was obviously my only question because it was like, well, you have $3 million in, in extra place and $2 million another place. Like, okay.
Yeah. So a big amount. It's not a good, because of the debt and I having a big impact, but it was amended. So, and it was, that was more of a spreadsheet issue, um, with some of the numbers I got.
And that's the other report that, that, not the one that Patrick's sharing right, Dr. Daley's sharing right now, right?
He's sharing the wrong one.
Correct.
Yeah. Um, okay. Any questions on the financial report on it? Okay.
Nope.
And then for the auto of middle and high school.
Right. So I mean, so I think I told the committee that we did have our student activity accounts audited as well. At middle school and the high school, those are really the only two accounts that meet the requirement for an outside independent CPA firm audit. Um, the, the elementaries, we sort of internally audit because of the small size of those, those accounts. But we are, we are in good standing, meeting our requirements every three years, having these accounts, um, audited by an outside firm. So the report was included. Uh, there were a few findings on the report. But I think, you know, despite the findings, like I'll walk through some of those and we can talk about it. I do think the team continues to do a really strong job with the student activity accounts. You know, their, their job is to find something that they, they dig through a lot of receipts that are touching a lot of different hands with students, advisors, principals offices, and then my office and the town treasurer's office. So a lot of different channels, um, that are included. And these, I think these are the, you know, things we'll certainly work on and tighten up and do additional training and, which I think a lot of it will, uh, address, but I think a lot of it is, is pretty typical in terms of the findings though. But I think in, and they included this, you know, they, they're used to doing reports where there's three or four or five pages of findings in the double digits. So to have a few here is, is still to me a, a relatively good, good report. I was, I was still pleased. So again, finding number one was just improve over control over receipts. So they, they were certain, um, receipts that they did not have student rosters for and, and, and some turnover receipts for by some of the accounts. So we'll certainly reiterate the importance of that to our class advisors, to the middle school principals and high school principal and so forth, and make sure we're getting that backup that is with each receipt. So I think they're going to find that if they really dig almost anytime, but we'll, we'll continue to work on that with them and, and improve some of that. And then they weren't fully confident that we were receiving and turnover receipts within 24 hours, which again, is that those two things are always going to be a challenge with just the nature of student activity accounts. When you're dealing with class advisors, teachers that have a lot going on, and this is kind of secondary to them. But we, we work hard to, to make sure that we, we meet requirements. So that was finding number one. Finding number two, um, had to do with this inactive accounts. So I was a little surprised at how high of the number they, they felt was at the high school, but we'll just continue to look at that. I think there was just some accounts mainly pro, potentially resulting in coming out of the pandemic and not, not being certain activity, financial activity for three years. So we'll continue to look at those at both the high school and the middle school. But this wasn't hugely alarming to me, but something we need to just continue to look at and communicate through the principal and the advisors to, to watch this every, every year. And then finding number three, again, probably these, again, that they're finding the three biggest challenges is just the accountability around, around travel. So there is a statement of final accountability, which is a document listed in the handbook and the, and the guidelines and manual. And sometimes it is a challenge to get advisors and class teachers that are going on field trips to complete that. We've been completing that on their behalf once we get the data, but they found a few, um, testing that didn't have that document. So we'll just need to, again, that's retraining, making sure that that's being done at all times. Um, and then I think it's one of the comments here that we'll look at that may require me to come back and make, maybe a policy change this fall would be, do we want to put something a little more formal in around the approval of student travel or class field trips? And that's more like principal, teacher to principal to our office. We're obviously following what we need to follow for the school committee policies, but they, they want to see that if a class, grade four is going to, um, you know, a, a class field trip to, uh, to an event somewhere that there, there was a, there was base, received approval from the principal's office and our office. So a lot of times we're trying, we're getting the email documentation from that and we might want to just Google, Google form or make it a little bit more formal. So we have it. Um, so that's be something I'll look at for that finding. But other than that, I think overall with only a couple of pages here, it was a good, good report. So we'll have any questions?
Any questions? My, my only comments, number one, excellent job as always. Number two, it's a little bit of sarcastic wise-ass remark, but do we really, are we really required to pay for this every couple of years? Because you said, we don't have to do it at the elementary. We are required to do this because it just seems like the amount we pay for this, this last one. I mean, the, the overall financial report on it, I completely understand. But the various student accounts, it just seems like, are we really getting any value for the money we're paying for this? But I don't know.
I know. No, it's a very good comment. It is, and it, I, it is expensive. It's like 5,000 per account. Um, they do spend a lot of time looking at everything. And so it's a lot of their labor and their time because they, this one was a little more challenging because it was not a hundred percent virtually. I think it might've been more efficient if they came in and sat with us. But we were sharing, sharing documents constantly for weeks with them. But I, I agree. I wish there was a way that it wasn't so expensive, but it is a requirement once every three years.
You're, you're saying 5,000?
What we're paying is standard. You know, every community is, it's 5,000 is kind of the going rate for this.
Well, I was just asking for the accounts, like when we have like all the different student accounts, they're not all separately 5,000, are they? Like every high school club?
No, no, just all, all together. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah.
My only other random question is like, just personally, I was just looking, their interest rates are so high right now for savings. Do we get any savings on that? Like with, with the money comes, I mean, are, are these, are all these various student accounts and everything? And, and just general savings accounts that are earning anything decent or not? Because I mean, I like savings accounts, like.
Yeah.
Some places.
They are earning interest. They are in savings accounts. It's, it has, the amount that's in the interest is not substantial, but, um, we can, that's a town treasury. We can certainly, certainly speak to the town and, 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 but yeah.
And we just, we just saw.
We can't use the interest.
I mean, through the finance plan.
We're allowed to use. Yeah. I mean, what I was trying to say is I think the policy we have in place does allow the interest generated to be used for audit. So that would help generate a little bit of an offset to that, but it's not, like I said, it's not significant.
Okay. Any other questions on any of the financial reports from Mr. Connolly? Okay. Hearing none. We move on to staffing. No update at this time, Dr. Daley?
None at this time. Nothing. What you just shared.
Bids and donations. Mr. McGowan.
All right. Uh, I just had this up. Where is it? There we are. I move that the committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $5,000 from Friends of Hornets Productions to be used towards the PAC sound system upgrade.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Rich, a second by Diana. Rich.
Aye.
Diana.
Aye.
Noel. Yes, Jeff.
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Five zero.
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of $10,000 from the North Reading Music Boosters to be used towards the PAC's sound system upgrade.
Second.
Motion by Rich, second by Diana. Rich.
Aye.
Diana.
Aye.
Noel.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Passes by zero. Thank you very much. Grants none at this time. Overnight trip request none at this time. Committee updates none at this time. Administrative report, Dr. Daley.
Just a couple, in addition to the stem quarter, I wanted to share. Just a couple. In addition to the stem quarter, I wanted to share that we had some great news that Alex Crucci, graduating senior, was selected by the Agonist Foundation as the athlete of the year. So that's really quite an accomplishment for one of our students. And I also wanted to share that Notorious won a national search and they are performing as the opening act for, at the Xfinity Center for a concert with Lover Boy and Foreigner. So they are doing that on August 5th. So if anyone wants to get tickets.
That is amazing.
See the North Reading Notorious Group open for them, which I think is just amazing.
And as amazing as it is, I'm sure all of them said, who are they?
Yeah, exactly. That's what had me laughing.
So I think we can get some tickets still available for good lawn seats there. I still call it Greatwoods, but that's awesome.
Good for you.
Patrick, that will really round out your, your concerts, right? I know you're a concert person. That will round out your summer concert series.
That would be fun. So, so yeah, I just wanted to share those updates as well.
Have we, have we ever had, has North Reading ever had a student win the state award for that? Do we know?
I am, I am not sure on that history. I can look into that. I'm not sure. But it's definitely a, quite a, quite an honor. You're saying for the MIA award?
Yes. I was just curious. It was the first time.
He said he had just a, obviously a tremendous year, tremendous career here.
Right. And I, I will, I will share. I saw on Facebook last night because I don't do anything else but other than other social media, but I saw the high school was going to do SpongeBob as their musical this year.
No way. That's awesome.
The, it's the upcoming meetings. Future business, we have our, a lot of meetings on August 29th. We have the goals workshop. We have a joint meeting with CPC and a regular meeting. And just to explain very quickly, CPC is talking about trying to improve their, you know, put it, put in potentially some low income housing. And they sort of want the input from the school committee on that. The only thing that I would ask in advance, Dr. Daly and Mr. Connolly, if we could have any information we know about like past developments, like I know there was estimates for Edgewood of what the impact would be, but I also remember that the impact was a lot more than estimated. That would be useful information to have for that meeting. So I don't know if we, if we can get that information before our next meeting, just so that we can have that.
I can reach out to Daniel McKnight and even start there.
Okay.
See what she's able to share.
I remember when we had all the boards come together at the end of that meeting, we were talking about that. And, you know, again, I mean, I think we should support low income housing. I'm not trying to say we shouldn't, but I just think understanding what the impact would be would be really important.
Sure. Okay.
And actually, on a similar note, I don't know if anybody knows anything about this, but I saw the email from the town about trying to form a wastewater board. And I did notice they were asking for individual residents, but also anybody that's on various boards that wanted to do that. So I don't know if we want to try to have a representative on that group. But I don't know. I mean, I think we can just let people volunteer if they have any desire to be part of SUI. Yeah, just wanted to point that out to the group if anybody wants to be in more meetings. September 11th, we have a meeting for school opening and school improvement plan presentation. September 26th is a regular meeting as well. And then Dr. Daly, do you have dates? So I guess you could share them in August on like when the, you know, the ori, open and orientation are, things like that, just so we can, I mean, I'll, I'll put it on my calendar at least.
Sure. That should be on the school website calendar as well, but I can share that out with everyone. But you're saying that the new teacher orientation is on the 23rd and 24th of August. And the, you know, our, our welcome back day, staff orientation day is on the 5th of September. First day of school is the 6th of September.
Okay. Then you're going to do it in the morning again?
It being the staff orientation?
Yeah, night, 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 the welcome back, nine or, nine or 10 in the morning again.
Most likely. We haven't finalized that yet, but that, that most likely will be similar to last year.
I just want to block it off and hope I'm not trailing commissioner when I go.
Yeah. A question I had about the 29th, because Scott and I, as we were planning, I believe we had said, Scott, I believe you said that this was a virtual meeting, but maybe you were thinking at that time, we're talking about tonight. So, you know, I think Danielle that it was a virtual meeting on the 29th. I'm just want to know what we should be posting.
I think we can talk to Danielle about that part of it. I mean, I, I think for the CPC piece of it, I'm fine if they don't want to all come. I don't know how many are there. I don't know how many people are around. Probably be good to have as many there as possible. I would assume that our regular meeting would at least be hybrid. And so that community can participate. But the question is on the goals workshop, typically we've done them in person. Do we want to do them in person? Do we want to do them virtually? I, I don't know. I mean.
Okay. But you're not looking for it to be fully virtual that night, like tonight?
I, I don't know. I mean, what, what, what's, what's the committee's feeling? I mean, are, are people going to be around? I mean, I can, I don't know if I'll be around or not, but I can come back for it if needed. But I think I'll probably be around that week anyways, because.
I think I will be too, so.
In theory, yeah, no, I should be around. Not in theory, in practice, I should be around.
Okay.
Hillary's already back at school.
I can list them as hybrid then.
Okay. Yeah, we can do hybrid that way then. And I mean, it's nice to be back for that. And I think that week, I mean, sports are starting and everything. So I think I'll probably have to be back that week anyway. So. Yeah. So we can do hybrid there and CPC if they, we can tell them that they want to come in person, they're welcome to, but we could entertain them hybrid as well. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Rich, second by Noel. Rich.
Aye.
Noel.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Diana.
Aye.
I'm an I as well, five zero. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everybody.
Hi, everybody. Have a good summer.
Thanks all. Bye.